This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice that this meeting has been provided to the whole Mussh Review, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2025, and was posted on the Borough's website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has been, has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and right of council chambers.
Hi, do you want to introduce the pledge allegiance?
To the right.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
A roll call.
Mayor Foster. Councilmember George.
Here.
Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kim Jong-un.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Borough Attorney Berlin.
Here.
And Borough Administrator Holger.
Yeah.
Um, and just for hanging on time up here, the mayor says she would be running a few minutes late tonight. And for approval of the minutes, can I have a motion to approve minutes as distributed, January 4th, 2025, regular meeting?
So moved second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Jong-un.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
And council report. Um, Councilmember Vargas, do you want to start us all?
Sure, thank you. Hello everybody, my name is Mona Edie Vargas, and I serve as a council liaison for the Arts and Recreation Portfolio. We have a few events coming up that you might like. The Arts Commission's Learn and Create Series will have its next event on Sunday, June 29th at 2:00 PM at the Highland Park Library. The topic will be embracing imperfection of art of the savvy, should be interesting. The collaboration with the Highland Park Library continues as part of the Color Our World, Our World Faster Dark at the Library Series. They will have collab, actually they have an event tonight that was Mandala dot art, which started at 7:00 PM. And their next one will be on July 29th at 7:00 PM. That will be collaged with Rwanda. And there's one coming up also on August 19th, which is called Tom Tom Gnomes with Sherry. That should be cute. As a reminder, these are all free events, so please reserve the dates and stay tuned for more programming from Arts Commission. Last week, the Department of Aging held its annual senior prom, which was a very enjoyable event. There was a buffet, photo booth, DJ, and lots and lots of fun. Thank you to Kim Montra and the team for organizing this beautiful event. I had a great time. And there's very silly pictures of me dancing somewhere, and I hope they never become public. I know, I have them on her coat. Mr. V. D., the Five Words at Donaldson Park is coming up on Thursday, July 3rd. First performance, also the first performance is part of the Park Dot Concert Series is scheduled for July 7th, starting at 6:00 PM, and the first act will be Forbidden Tropics and Afro-Peruvian Jacket. Please check out their bio on the Borough's page, www.hpboro.com. I have had the pleasure of listening to them before, and it is really, really great to see. So we hope you come out and support. Also, the Department of Recreation Lab is busy preparing for summer camp, which starts, I believe, on July 7th. So if you haven't enrolled your kids, please make sure to reach out to them and see if there's any spots available. Their number is 722-819-DOZER-52. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you very much. My name is Matt Hale, and I chair the Economic Development Committee. Excuse me. A couple things today. First of all, the zoning and or order of adjustment needs new members. The Board of Adjustment is, is looking for both regular and alternate numbers. It's a great way to get involved and learn about the processes for building done in Highland Park. If several slots opens or interested, please fill out the volunteer application form on the website and get it in ASAP. Next up is Third Street. The big news is that with the pedestrian plaza, we have met with Artiro, which is our landscape and engineering design firm, about the pedestrian plaza. We had a great initial internal work session where we helped to sort of clarify some of the key questions about space and sort of meet and introduce staff to each other. So we know how the workflow is going to go. Next up is that there will be a series of small key stakeholder meetings. These include businesses in and around South Third, homeowners in the neighborhood, Main Street, of course, our engineering planner, code enforcement, police and fire departments as well. So this is where the, the team gets to hear about ideas, needs, hopes, and dreams of these key stakeholders. There, they'll, they'll go back, identify different possibilities and concepts, which we're going to share widely with, with the public. The goal is, again, to make sure that we've got all the information from various stakeholders. They'll then turn around and, and, and create a sort of mock-up and concept ideas. Again, we'll sort of put that out to the public. So it's exciting to see this project. It's been on the books forever, but it's exciting to get it moving. Next up is, we, we know and we've heard that there's, there's quite a bit of concern about what's going to happen with the right in property. And we share this concern, and we just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the, the town is in, in very close contact with the property owner. But I also wanted to remind people that it is important to remember that this is a bankruptcy proceeding for Rite Aid. And that means that there's likely to be some steps and, and procedures that need to get followed. Rite Aid has an active lease, and that is an asset, which is part of those bankruptcy proceedings. They can try and sell that at auction to raise money to sort of help pay off their creditors. So it is frustrating, and it is unclear that, that we know that. But we really just want to make sure that, that we have to sort of make sure these various bankruptcy proceedings occur before either the landlord or, or the town can kind of jump in. There's a lot of potential different scenarios about what's possible at Rite Aid and what might happen. I, I understand that there isn't, that the, the level of certainty isn't there, and it's a little bit frustrating that this is happening. But I, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are very much connecting with the landlords, staying on top of the situation. There will be an FAQ about everything that's going on with Rite Aid. We're just going to put that out shortly. So check the website for that FAQ. A couple things. In new businesses, there's some movement down on Main Street. The Wells Fargo Building, I believe, has a new tenant. Looks like a physical therapy, healthcare concern, often with kids. More details on that to come. It is also possible there might be a new restaurant coming to where Safe Drugs was, and a new pharmacy coming where Berkeley Bakery is. These are all in the process. They still have to do renovations. They still have to do some fixing. They still have to do some permitting. We are helping all of the concerns along the way, but it's exciting to see some changes coming to our, our downtown. Then in terms of Main Street, always remember the Friday Farmer's Market. But I also wanted to highlight that there's some really interesting movies coming to the outdoor movie theater. Total Recall is a classic Arnold Schwarzenegger masterpiece, where he plays a shy retiring librarian. Oh, wait, no, sorry. He plays a guy who likes to blow things out, but it's really fun. It's really, really cool. And it takes place on Mars, so that's kind of cool, too. It's a fun movie. That airs on July 19th. And then August 2nd is an underground documentary called DEFCON: The Documentary. And I just wanted to ensure everybody that this is not a movie about the current state of the world. It is simply a movie about a, someone snuck in a camera to a hackers convention. And so it's supposed to be quite good about, about that. Some crazy, fun, love-loving actors. So those are fun things to do in Highland Park and take some time to, to shop local. Try and shop local three times a week. Come to the movie theater, come to the farmer's market, go out for our new businesses. And then also, please make sure to be careful with the heat. It's really hot out. That's what I have.
Please. Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Matt Hale, for, for explaining Rite Aid, too. I think that's really helpful. And it's really helpful because it is complicated, and it's, it's all these external things that, you know, we have to keep our eye on.
That's my count. Excuse me. Clerk, please let the record show that the mayor has her on that. Thank you.
Now that, now that the mayor is in the audience.
No, that's all. No, that's, that's, you should, you should stop. Please continue your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I want, I have to be on my best B page. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. Thank you. Welcome to our guests to just kind of get a better feel for the nuts and bolts here in town. So in, as, as liaison to, to Public Works, that includes the Department of Public Works. I'm going to go through a little report out on, you know, our activity this, this month in Public Works. So sanitation. We're 375 tons collected, nine collection days. They were all delivered to Northsfield County Landfill. And that's total. On the South Side, it was 208 tons collected in landfill over five collection days. On the North Side and Triangle, it's 167 tons collected in landfill over four collection days. So those Sussiders, we, you know, we prepare. The business district is, is collected with both South Side and North Side and Triangle collections. And so, and for recycling, there's a total of 97 and a half tons collected in the month of June. I'm sorry, there's smaller numbers were, were monthly. We're in the month of June, over 10 collection days, delivered to Republic Services, formerly Colgate Recycling Services. That's a year-to-date total of 423 tons. South Side, 47 tons this month. North Side, 50 tons this month. And year-to-date, 191 tons for South Side, 232 tons for North Side. Sweet sweeping. So you've seen our, our little sweet sweeper poking around. Well, we do have 31 miles of roadway that get collected in the debris. Storms get clogged, and it's really important to be out there. It's also important to follow the signage and make sure that you're not parked on, on street sweeping days. Where more parking is prohibited, because that results in less effective street sweeping. But this month in June, there were seven days, it was, there were seven days of service. 135 miles of road swept in this month. 484 miles year-to-date. This month, the streets sweep removed 16 loads or 72 cubic yards of material. And that's 60 loads or 259 cubic yards of material for the entire year. So just to give you an idea of, you know, some of our operations there. And we're always looking to try to improve as well. And I did want to acknowledge that some folks did reach out about recent news regarding the county recycling program. It is something that the Borough is looking into to partner with, but there may be considerations that affect our decision one way or the other. So I just wanted to just mention that in case you saw any recent developments. Sustainable Highland Park will host its regular monthly meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, June 25th at 7:30 PM, here in person at Borough Hall in the downstairs conference room. You can enter the building on the South Sixth Side near the community center, and you can also participate in the meeting on Zoom, and the link is available at www.hpboro.com. And just some save the dates of through Sustainable Highland Park, July 5th, there is a community cleanup. Let's come together and clean up the woods at the bottom of Sat 7th Avenue. Meet at the entrance, paved path at the intersection of Sat 7th and Donaldson. Gloves, buckets, and other supplies will be provided. That's at 9:00 AM. At 11:00 AM, we will meet at Sat 7th, oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. That's 9:00 AM. July 17th, please save the date to add color to your garden with native plants. Join us at the Highland Park Public Library to learn more about the importance of native plants in our ecosystem and the need to add native plants to our spaces. Return presenter and master gardener Sutar will introduce some of the many colorful native plants that can beautify your space and support native bees, butterflies, and birds. Our boards and commissions are stocked with some really terrific experts who are also obviously very community-minded. So attending these meetings, you might get some really great tips and tricks. But then you can also, you know, if, if there's anything that we're reporting out here, feel free to approach us and we can help connect you. The, the Borough does have a, has, has a gas leaf blower task force to explore the ideas of putting guardrails on gas-powered leaf blower use. That's composed of members of Sustainable Highland Park, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, and the Highland Park Environmental Commission. The task force will host another informational and feedback session this Thursday, June 26th, 2025, in the Ida Kushner, Kushner Media Room, formerly the Community Room, at the Highland Park Public Library at 7:00 PM. This task force is really, if you remember before, the plastic bag ban went into effect, both locally and statewide, Sustainable Highland Park led an informational campaign and engagement campaign, just really answering questions, showing how these initiatives can be implemented locally, and what's on the challenges or considerations towns have to, have, have to take before making a decision. And that's kind of where we are. The council has not been presented with, with, with any of the findings, but the gas-powered leaf blower task force is collecting data from other municipalities, connecting with other decision-makers that have, you know, made, made some efforts in their communities. And it also does tie into a statewide effort, because we always prefer state-level guidance for these types of things. I mean, it's also important for towns to act on their own and take the lead. But when there's a, when, when, when we have allies in the legislature, you know, who might agree with us, it's, it's, it's great if they can help show the way as well. So Senator Bob Smith and Assemblywoman Tucker sponsor S217, that would ban some gas leaf blowers for most of the year in New Jersey, and it provides credits for up to 50% to people who buy electric ones, unless towns retain money that they get from enforcement violations. So there is state, there, there is, there is considerable support. There's a lot of cosponsors on this legislation for a state, a state-led effort. But because actions like these can help Highland Park standing in our sustainability certification and our ability to generate more money and to, and to have access to more grants, these initiatives are really important to explore. And I do think it could be really impactful. I do think that a lot of us learned a lot, you know, knew a lot about the noise and the particulates that gas-powered leaf blowers let off. But I think when we were all home during COVID, yeah, a lot of us got a better feel for just how impactful and how disruptive it can be on, on, on many levels. And it's not really a ban issue. It really can directly impact one's health, one's level of concentration, and so forth. The Highland Park Environmental Commission will hold its regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, July 2nd at 8:00 PM on Zoom. Go to www.hpboro.com for the link. And I did just want to thank the Human Relations Commission, the mayor, and my council colleagues for another great J Team flag raising. These flag, flag raisings are among my favorite activities in the time when we can fly the flag high as a symbol of our support for, 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 for those of us, for, for those of us who've particularly been marginalized or felt any impression or feel unsafe. It's very important that we consistently and routinely illustrate and announce Highland Park as a safe place. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council President, for filling in for the mayor for the first few minutes. I did excellent, as always. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Stelwick. I chair the council's Health and Human Services Committee. I have a fairly brief report for tonight. First, just picking up where my colleague, Mr. Hirsch left off, I just wanted to thank the Human Relations Commission and Borough's staff. Special shout out to Harry and Kim for all their hard work putting together another series of successful flag-raising events this year. We had the Caribbean American Heritage Pride and June Flag Raisings just this month, and lots of borough residents turned out to enjoy. So thanks once again for all your help in making these events happen. Second, as we're approaching that time of the year where dangerous heat waves like one we're currently experiencing, experiencing can occur, I just wanted to caution people to exercise caution, stay hydrated, and to stay indoors when possible. If you are in need of a place to cool off, you are welcome to stop by in our municipal buildings during our regular business hours, namely the community center, Borough Hall, and the library. We're also grateful to our community partner, the Reformed Church of Highland Park, for making their quilt room available to residents during evening and weekends. The hours for all these buildings are as follows. The community center and Borough Hall are open Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and Friday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Close Saturday and Sunday. The library is open Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The Reformed Church of Highland Park quill room is open daily from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Relatively, the State Department of Environmental Protection has declared tomorrow an Air Quality Action Day for ozone, and advises that sensitive individuals, including young children, the elderly, and those with respiratory diseases such as asthma, are advised to avoid strenuous activities during the afternoon and early evening. And lastly, I just wanted to note that the Commission for Universal Access will be meeting tomorrow at 5:00 PM in person at Borough Hall in the Bishopfold Conference Room right across from here, the council chambers, as well as on Zoom. The link is available on the Borough website, hpboro.com. And also tomorrow, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall in the lower-level conference room here at Borough Hall. Hopefully, I'll have time for dinner. That's my report for tonight.
I hope so.
Sounds like a power bar. Power bar, there.
Councilmember George.
Thank you, Jane. I just wanted to warn Councilman Hale. You can be making fun of Arnold Schwarzenegger, even though the nickname is even terrible. But remember, the newest hit science fiction movie is called The Librarians. Watch it. Don't make fun of my librarians.
Good to know.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilman Phil George, and I'm liaison to our public safety agencies and organizations. A warning from the chief and the fire chief. Please practice safety in this heat bank. The police department reminds us to keep hydrated, and that includes in our vehicles. The heat is so high, they don't realize the temperature is building even within air-conditioned plastic, and you're stuck there like River Road tonight for 45 minutes in the shade of the park. The outside thermometer was 106 degrees. Be careful, please. And police and fire, the statewide warning is if it is just too hot and it's getting to, give it up and do it later. Although, cool off, relax, and hydrate. For the fire department, you'll see on the agenda tonight on 11 OMP, we have two grant applications. Once more, the Borough is exploring ways to extend our services by two grants. One is the Fire Department's FEMA Safer Grant, which is staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, which could provide up to $335,000 over three years for a full-time firefighter. There is a mashing provision over the three years of the grant, which allows a permanent transition to staff. We're also, we got a grant from the statewide insurance fund, which is our insurance fund, which provides general safety and loss prevention training. This is our insurance fund's effort to promote safety through small fixes, which could assist us have to work in a safer environment. We provide fire hydro connectors, traffic control gear, and a lift gate for one of our trucks for the princely sudden $5,800. But it goes to safety, it reduces our premiums, and it certainly will assist our staff. Another way that we're seeking grants to economize. For the librarian, for the library, we'd like to thank trustee Pishi Wade for her active and engaged term as a library trustee and the program she brought to fruition during her short term. Due to her career advancement, it's a loss to us, but we thank her for her services as trustee. And if you're interested in screening for the position of trustee as a mayor's appointment, please see the Borough website, the library website, contact us up, or the mayor's office on Street Blazer via Borough email. Library trustees continue their invitation to municipal officials at their monthly meetings to present a brief synopsis of the role and responsibilities within the Borough. At the trustees' meeting last week, our esteemed Borough Administrator presented the tasks and obligations of the Borough Administrator and some of the larger programs that the Boroughs engaged in. This program results in a great increase in cross knowledge and cross-pollinization of all of the Borough's agencies by sharing the knowledge and infrastructure for planning. The Mr. Bodis School Library Director wants to remind everyone, the trustees have approved the paver improvement for the front of the library. The entire front of the library will be repaved with pavels. The concrete circle will be removed, so it's all paved. We'll announce when that starts, but there'll be a temporary inconvenience for using the North Second Entrance for a while, while the improvements are put into place. And so for the summer, reminding everyone, the summer library season is kicking in. As of this weekend, and the hours of reminder are Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Wednesday and Friday is 10 to 5. Saturday is 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Sunday, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. We will be closed for the Fourth of July weather. And the activities, looking at the calendar, the summer activities, there is at least one thing scheduled almost every day, including weekends through August, and ages from infants in, in arms right up through adult programming, everything from the science heroes that was today. The program was a great program. It was, in Search of the Missing Color was today. Excellent program. This is a professional program that travels to libraries. That was the kickoff for the summer season. And finally, with regard to our safe walking and cycling, they're working on the policy recommendations for adoption, in part for Sustainable Highland Park Silver or possibly Gold certification, but also to regularize the recommendations for safe walking and cycling and make them more of a standard to be applied across the board for our programming, for our paving, for neighborhood improvement, and for our redevelopment program. It'll be including e-bikes and e-scooters and other alternatives to motor vehicles. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President.
Sure. Just a few reminders and announcements. The second quarter's water sewer bill is due Monday, and...
Got to have to run the meeting today. And, and a few announcements from our downtown
vendors that I just recently frequented. Me Too now has a happy hour from, started June 11th through August 7th. Every Wednesday and Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00, they have a buy one, get one 50% off on their select items. And then Akie has brought back their seasonal ice cream selection. And DeeDee, because I go over here, they ask for, and DeeDee has a new item of spinach and tomato on there that he forced on me. But it was, it was actually good. But they have a new item on their menu, so check it out if you have time. And also, just wanted to remind everyone that the Anchor Grant, the Anchor Benefit Application is still open. Trying to get them in as soon as possible, so please go on the state website and apply there. And I will be... And one more, one more announcement from, um, Sunday, this Sunday, at the community center, there's going to be a Highland Park DEI cookie exchange hosted by Gary Leslie, who used to do all of our video, videography for the council meetings. It's a, uh, breed cookies from all different cultures and exchange them as a symbolic support for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then if you're comfortable, you can say a few statements about it. I, I love that. And I look forward to going. I'm gonna probably pick up something store-bought, but I'm gonna bring you something. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I am so happy that you're reporting in all the places that in town, so people know that we are really shopping in these stores and we're really promoting and supporting local business. Thank you. See, they have deals, so check out our, check out our restaurants, check out our eateries, our local shops. They are great deals. Borough Administrator report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to point out on the agenda, there is a ordinance on for introduction. May look a little familiar, because we had thought we were going to introduce it a few weeks back, but we needed to incorporate some feedback from both the state's Phil Ready Commission. And I should mention, the ordinance is rather boringly typed And I should mention, the ordinance is rather boringly titled, "Licenses: An Amendment to a Section of Our Existing Code to Add a Section Called Filming." And the reason we're doing that is we're going to be participating, assuming the council's support of here, in the state's Film Ready Ordinance and Film Ready Program, which includes this model ordinance as well as a number of other initiatives to kind of promote Highland Park as a possible place for films to be produced. And there, they have, there's places, there's space for all kinds of communities. Ours being one of them. So I'm really excited this is on tonight. One issue that came up as we were developing the ordinance was in particular to smaller filmmakers, and we met with the Film Ready Commission folks to see if we had within this ordinance enough power to waive some of the permitting requirements for smaller, kind of de minimis filming operations, meaning a couple hours handheld, you know, cameras, et cetera. And the answer was yes. And so what we will do is, as we plan to roll this out, we'll make sure that in all the permitting and on the information on our website, it's very clear, you know, there's these different categories and what you have to do. So we're actually becoming welcoming to the small filmmakers, of which we have many in town. So that was one reason that was really important. So I'm really excited that's on the agenda for this evening. And so I guess we're introducing tonight, and then we'll have to wait till August to adopt because our meeting's too close next week to vote. So, you know, we'll have plenty of time to roll it over and have our public hearing at the August meeting. The only other thing I wanted to mention was we had a really great meeting with the chairs of all these wonderful boards and commissions that you heard being reported out at our meeting tonight. It was a meeting with staff and those chairs to help walk them through what's, you know, protocol, how to do purchasing, and also, and much more importantly, to make connections amongst those boards and commission numbers. And so it was a great meeting. We're going to get back on track and do that at least annually, plus our volunteer appreciation event in the winter. But things like the Leaf Blower Task Force that was mentioned earlier, those are those cross, you know, group collaborations that really speak to kind of the value of these boards and commissions and kind of elevating different policy and programmatic goals. So I just wanted to thank everybody for participating and, you know, look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted also to say that I met a few people in town. It's only that the workshop was really, really educational. Thank you for going. And I wanted to let you know that people really appreciated boards and commission meter. And I cannot wait for movie time in Highland Park. I'm super excited about that. Borough Attorney, report.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no report from Legal.
Oh, my reports. Well, it's a short one, but this is a really, this is a really, really, really good one I want to report on. And I'm going to read it and say, you can say I'm a little bit biased or provincial about when I see Highland Parkers doing well, and especially Highland Park teens. And I want to recognize Highland Park teen that has gotten to second place, knocked it out of the park, and her name is Hadasha Rich. Hadasha is an active member of the mayor's teen advisory council, and she won second place in the high school division of the USA Shidon Tanash held in Rivendell, New York in May. This is a very competitive series of quizzes and tests that test students' their knowledge of characters, stories, and the commandments of the Torah. Hadasha accomplished this all with a remarkable amount of skill, talent, and technique because she was currently a public school student, and within a year she was able to move in and to study this and to win second place, which is a very huge honor. So congratulations, Hadasha. You make us all proud, and you put Highland Park on the map. With that said, I would like to give her a huge round of applause. Thank you. And a little bit of update, Upper Raritan. We have talked and talked and talked about Upper Raritan for a long time. And Upper Raritan, we were supposed to have stripings and painting and river road work done this summer. However, when we spoke with the state DOT, they advised us that the work is going to continue, but they're backlogged in their maintenance department. So it's on a maintenance schedule, but with all the rains that we've been having, it was not able to be possible. So they're telling me that the painting will happen this fall, the striping on the roads and the cosmetic pieces, that that's going to be happening this fall. So stay tuned, and I'll keep you updated as soon as I learn more. Also, I met with the county last week, we had a meeting with the county attorney-in-law, and one of the things that I like to do is to keep reminding them that Highland Park is here and the commitments that they have made to Highland Park, to make sure that those commitments stay in place and anything, anything that we can collaborate on, especially as we see budget cuts from DC, how we can work together more closely, do more shared services projects. And the meeting went very well, and we have some things that we're going to be collaborating on. I'll keep you posted on that. And that's my report. And now it's time for public participation. Twenty-one minutes total, three minutes per speaker, limited to items on this agenda. Comments from the members of public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. Anyone on Zoom, Terry?
No, Mayor. There are four attendees. No hands up.
Okay. Okay. See, there's none. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second. Roca. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pustanic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Okay, now we move on to ordinances, first reading. Clerk, please report an ordinance on introduction of ordinance number 25-2115.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 247, titled "Licenses," to create Article 5, titled "Filming" in the municipal code of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, by the Economic and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by type.
May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 20-2115?
Motion. Second.
Roca. Councilmember George.
Definitely, yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
My best job to this day was popping popcorn in movie theaters, so if this needs to...
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes. Nice and short.
And now we move to our consent agenda. As any member of the council, is there anything that you would like to pull for a separate vote on the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda items, 11A through 11Q?
That's it.
Roca.
Councilmember George.
Yes, an important ordinance on the county being maintained and new authority.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
I just wanted to point out 11H. I wanted to thank Councilman Hale and the planning board for adopting the Borough Special Share Plan for Row 4. So, absolutely, yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pustanic.
Yes, and I just wanted to note that the, I'm very excited to see the people modernization program around there because that will help support our community. So very excited about that. We'll make a note, and we'll listen to see that we're going to be approving another extension for an active ABC license. So we, I understand, I think our discretion was limited here. They've satisfied the statutory process, but yes, hopefully we'll get some use out of that in the near future.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Now it's time for a second public participation through minister speaker on any subject to conclude at 9:00 p.m. Comments from members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. Please address the name and address.
My name is Subshiro 201, subject to having your card there.
Hi, my name is Melissa Mollanic, 216 Graham Street, South.
Community council members, we're here as representatives of the high school student progress. And we're here to talk to you about something that the student progress worked very hard on this year, and that is lowering the voting age for board of education elections. This is an example that's been seen throughout the state. We think it's something that could be very important for the town in increasing youth civic engagements, as well as bringing the...
Yeah, so over the past year, student progress has been working closely and had many meetings with Vote 16 in New Jersey. And you might have heard of Vote 16 in Newark, and it was a very active organization that worked with high school students to allow the passing of an ordinance to have 16 and 17-year-olds being able to vote in school board elections. And that franchised over 7,000 students in Newark to vote. And it has been recognized as a model for civic engagement among teens across New Jersey. So we're trying to get that in Highland Park as well.
Also throughout the year, we worked with Vote 16 to develop legal framework for this. And through that, as well as legal analysis from the New Jersey Institute of Social Justice and established in Newark, municipalities do in New Jersey to have the power to lower the voting age in school board elections. So this is something that could be done at this council.
Yeah, so research and evidence supporting this change is clear and very compelling. It shows that voting is a habit, and when people vote in their first eligible election, which very easily could be students voting in board elections at 16 or 17 years old, people are far more likely to vote throughout the rest of their lives, which is something that we really want to encourage. And in cities and countries that have lowered the voting age to 16, turnout among 16 and 17-year-olds has consistently exceeded that of older voters. And in Tacoma Park, Maryland, turnout for 16 and 17-year-olds was more than double the overall rate, and similar results have been observed internationally in Austria, Scotland, and Norway. A recent study from Scotland found that young people who voted at 16 or 17 were significantly more likely to keep voting throughout their twenties compared to those whose first election was at 18 years old.
And locally, it's highlighted in Highland Park. We conducted surveys to see if over 200 students who would be in this voting population that are in high school, over 90% of them did support for this resolution and allowing 16, 17-year-olds in this town to vote first in board elections.
Thirty seconds. Not only that, but we've gotten a lot of support from teachers within Highland Park High School who live in Highland Park, and they think that this would be an act of civic engagement for our students, and it would really allow students to voice their opinions and improve the school how they see it fit.
And then finally, this reform will increase voter turnout, particularly in local elections, where participation is often low in school board lectures as has been in recent years. By engaging with students who are from high school, supported by teachers' family and civic education, which we have voter registration drives every season in the high school. This is a way we can increase youth voter turnout, as well as civic engagement as our students become adults.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and we urge you to lower the voting age for board of education elections to 16 years old.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom, Terry?
Oh, sorry, I was just thinking. Um, no, Mayor, there are still four attendees, but no hands up.
Okay. See, there's none. May I have a motion to close public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Roca.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pustanic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
I just want to say that I have been following Newark votes. I watched, I followed them, I followed the students that led the vote in Newark for the voting for Board of Ed to vote, and I watched the results of the election. I've been watching, and I thought, I thought it's a good exercise in civics because we don't teach civics in school anymore, and this is one way that young people can get involved civically. I do love the idea. Please share whatever information you have with us so we all can take a look at it collectively, and we'll review. We'll go to committee, and we'll discuss, and we'll get back to you at some point. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, everybody's in favor now, huh?
We agree.
I'll give you my email so you can email me the information.
Okay. Thank you.